Elaine Adams.
Yeah.
Joanna Blanchard. Emily Gleyer. And we will not be here today, Dick.
Here.
Chris Markins is on his way, Ashley.
Yeah.
Chris Redding.
Hannah.
So could I get a motion to approve the present agenda?
So moved.
Are there any questions, issues? On favor? Favor? Subcommittee updates, finding. Sorry, sorry. Finance committee?
Uh, said back to Christine, so all work assigned, we love the data.
Okay. Teaching, learning and accountability, we do not have that. Policy?
We're restated.
For purpose.
We'll be picking up our five-year review soon.
Okay.
Just not now.
Joanna's not here, so no communication. A strategic plan?
Going real well, we've met again the past week. And we set the date for the following month. Once again, we've analyzing the data that came in. We're emphasizing what the stakeholders are emphasizing. So it's all part of our schedule.
Great. And superintendent evaluation, we met yesterday and you all have a packet in front of you. Well, you have three things, actually. You have the evaluation that you need to fill out. The summative evaluation that needs to be filled out. And then Dr. V's goals with all his explanation and evidence. What I have a summary page on the top. And I have how we score in points, directions, go through circle. Each, you know, go through, it has the goal stated at the top. Then the standard and the elements. So goal one has four elements that you'll rate him on. And then goal two has six elements you'll rate him on. Goal three has four elements and goal four has three elements. So it's all, you know, pretty straightforward, just circle it. Get it, we should say, what, two weeks? Get it back to Mary Ann in two weeks so we can report on it, our next meeting.
So it will be twenty-second because the next week. Now it's twenty-eighth, twenty-sixth until we can put it on May third agenda?
Yes. So do May twenty-sixth. And if you score a one or a four, we'd like you to attach in the back, you know, why you gave that score. Just a little explanation. So does anyone have any questions? Favor? Okay, uh, next up is public comment. We have three minutes to state your name and all that good stuff.
Hello, my name is James Buckley, I'm a para at Donahue Elementary School. Recently, the union and administration met for the first negotiation session to bargain for a new contract for Kentucky's para educators. Like many of my colleagues, I was disappointed to learn that there were no representatives present for this session like there were when you bargained for the teacher's recent new contract. Since you were not there to give us your bargaining team directly, I'd like to read our Kentucky para bargaining platform now. Number one, living wage for all para educators. A living wage for a single person with no children in Essex County is now thirty-nine thousand, two hundred and seventy-nine dollars a year. In the Kentucky Regional School District, our para educators earn a base salary between twenty thousand and twenty-five thousand dollars per year. As a result, many of our educators qualify for public assistance even after working second or third jobs just to make ends meet. We propose a starting wage of twenty-five dollars per hour and a path to a living wage for all para professionals within six years. Increasing longevity payments to recognize para educators who have dedicated their careers to educating Kentucky students. And a personal care stipend for para educators who work with Kentucky's media students. Number two, recognition and respect as educators. Para educators deserve to be treated with the same respect as other educators in the building, including fair compensation for advancing our own education and training to better support our students. We propose increasing salary incentives for para educators who manage to earn degrees in spite of their current low wages. Improving compensation rates and policies for para educators who serve as substitute teachers add a tremendous cost saving for the district. New language to allow para educators to request voluntary transfers and to discuss involuntary transfers with administrators before they occur. Number three, job security. Kentucky para educators do not know if, I'm sorry, do not know if they will have a job from one year to the next. The Kentucky Regional School Committee must eliminate this insecurity and commit to the importance of our para educators. We propose a one-year probationary period for all newly hired para educators and just cause provisions for all non-provationary para educators. Thank you for taking the time to listen to me, sorry. I hope you will be able to join us for our next session on May ninth so that we may work together to reach a fair deal for all parties. If none of you is available, I'm sure the para educator team is more than willing to work with you to find mutually agreeable rates. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Okay, up next, super bowl news, student rep.
Thank you, Madam Chair, I'm going to turn it over to the question rep in Columbia.
Okay. Um, one thing that I wanted to mention was the dodgeball tournament that the high school just did. I just opened a projector to be here, I was going to start pictures, but I'll do like a big picture for maybe the next meeting. So we, we've had that dodgeball tournament, I think ever since two thousand and fourteen. So you've had it every year minus the last two years because of COVID. So that's become like, kind of like a standard of, usually it's in the fall, but we didn't really get to it. We weren't sure if it was like safe in the fall. So we kind of brought it back as like a spring event, it was kind of in between winter and spring. And we weren't sure if it was going to be like received as well as it had been in the past because the younger kids. It's kind of weird because they kind of don't know like the normal stuff that we all know. But we had a ton of freshman and sophomore teams and it was really fun just to kind of get everyone together again. And we had about like twenty teams play and a lot, like we filled the stands, so that was really good to see. We had pizza and candy and stuff like that. So that was just really fun thing that we kind of got to see come full circle again. Oh, and then also, it's kind of weird to think about, but we were talking and we thought that that is like the last event that will ever be held in that gym. Which is kind of sad, but also kind of cool. So like, we were really glad that we got to kind of do one last thing in that gym, which is fun. And then also more photos I'll share probably next week. Were from senior superlatives, we did that yesterday. And we did some today too, it was really funny. Just to kind of see everyone's personality come through. I told kids to bring whatever props they wanted and it was really funny. There, there were a lot of weird ones. But a lot of them were funny and that was kind of just a fun little thing. And I think that's kind of like being the beginning to what's to come now for all of us. A lot of our events, we just had a National Honor Society meeting this morning to plan. Technically, it's the induction, which will be at the end of May. So just little things like that starting to build up now. And then also, we started spring sports. I think we're on our fourth week. So track teams just had a meet against Newbury Port yesterday. The girls won by one point, so that was good. Boys, tough one.
A complete.
You held in there, you did a lot better than I thought. Like that's, that's really good. So there's hope. There's hope. And then lacrosse played last week too, they had some trouble. But it was really nice to see a lot of kids going. I know a ton of kids went to the boys' lacrosse game. And it was just kind of cool because I feel like usually kids only go to football and basketball games. So it's kind of fun to see everyone to go to this, like everyone going to spring sports too. So I think there will be a lot of community centers, things like that. And then overall, I think we're kind of, it's kind of a weird time right now because we want to be done. Like it's April break and it's warm, so we always kind of want to be done this school. But I know we have AP exams. And I'm taking the seal of by literacy test this week, so we can't give up yet. So that's kind of our attitude right now, we're still chugging along.
Excellent, thank you, good luck.
Thanks.
Thanks, yeah. So from the district side of things, the bigger, big news that we've got is Central Services is moving next week. So we will no longer be housed up there in that strip. Technology has already moved over to Bagnell. Student Services, which includes special education, along with data manager, is moving to Page. And then the business office and the remaining, arranger of the superintendent's office will be moved over to Sweetser. So that's a temporary move to give us the opportunity to renovate here and this building is going to be invaded, demoed, and we need to get out and established before that happens. So we're moving again, that's next week. So I don't know how that's going, we haven't talked about how that might impact our meeting locations.
I thought we were going to continue meeting here until June and then we'll.
Then we'll make a change. So that's, that's big news, the building update. The building, just wanted to make sure everyone was clear on this, the building is on time and it is on budget. We don't need, don't have to go to get more money from anybody, we are, money we have, we are good. So we're on time and on budget for money, for the building project. Merrimack Town Meeting, so the town meetings. Merrimack is having their meeting at the regular time, that's April twenty-fifth at seven-thirty at Sweetser. All three towns, they're, all three towns are voting May second, Tuesday, May second. Groveland's Town Meeting is May twenty-fourth at seven at Bagnell.
Fair.
You sure it's?
Monday, May twenty-third, right?
Well, I checked on the calendar, it's the twenty-fourth, but.
It is, it's never on a Tuesday, it's on Monday.
Okay.
No, I mean, they sent it out, I'll check again.
Did you say Groveland is the twenty-third?
Yeah, I had Tuesday, the twenty-fourth is what I had.
Oh.
No, it's Monday, the twenty-third.
Okay, then Monday, the twenty-third. And then West Newbury is having theirs out behind the annex Saturday, May fourteenth at nine o'clock. Of course, the importance of the school district is for Merrimack, Groveland on those ballots. On Groveland's ballot, the override for the school budget will be on there. On Merrimack, it first needs to be approved at town meeting for it to be on the ballot or to be voteable on the ballot. So those are the two important meetings, so we'll see what happens. Next three things, we're going to turn it over to Mr. Conway, he's going to talk about financial literacy curriculum grant that we have as well as an ELL grant, Title III grants and ELL additional position.
Sure. We are recipients of a competitive grant from the Department of Education for financial literacy planning curriculum development.
Can't you just say no?
You're running out of codes, aren't you? Yeah.
You should have seen the auditors today, they were not a happy group.
So it is good news for us, yes, more work for Mr. LeBrec, but so we have some funds to develop financial literacy curriculum for the high school and for middle school students who are doing that. For the rest of this year and those classes will be put into place for next year. And then two other things related to our ESL programming. We are also the collaborative recipient of Title III grant. Note Greg does not need to manage any of that, it's done, Crest Collaborative actually manages it for us. But part of that funding allows for us to do some summer tutoring for our ESL students. And we have had an influx of ESL students in the last month. Which that combined with the bridge being out necessitates us to have an additional point six ESL teacher. We service, I know Mr. Markins will find this amazing, we service the entire district's ESL population with one ESL teacher. However, that is no longer possible to do. So we have hired a point six and she will begin on Thursday.
Madam Chair, that's, that is the news, but it is, Mr. Conway does bring up a great point, we have no update on the bridge. I would say the information we do have is not super positive. I'm sure it'll be fixed and then hit again.
Can I ask you, because he brings up another question, how many staff does the district have that during the school day or day have it need to be potentially mowed across the river? Is it, I can imagine it's two.
Yeah, two, two or three, they don't share specialists that cross the river. You know, we have district-wide people like the ESL teacher, maybe the BCBA and our coaches, but generally, while they may work in all of those buildings, they generally sort of have a day in the building versus having to go back and forth during the day.
Chris, can I ask a question about backup to the financial literacy grant? So what, what, what will that entail for us?
So it can take a lot of different forms, the Department of Ed has given us some guidance on what that might look like. At the base level, so there'll be more than one class will be developed. So sort of a series of classes, certainly for the middle school students, it'll be, you know, basics of financial planning and understanding and financial literacy. And then as you move into the high school, it can be more advanced, so those classes will fall into the business department. So as we seek to sort of build up more opportunities for students in the business department overseeing by the math department. Some opportunities for students at the high school to take classes on potentially investment. And building off of sort of the life skills of financial literacy.
We, we have piecemealed a couple of courses here and there right now that exist, but there's not a, there's not a pathway that you could take. So this would help us see what, what that, what would that pathway look like? I think the one thing that we've not touched on yet, I know they do the stock markets, pull stocks, our mutual funds. We've not delved into the world of NFTs or Bitcoin or any of, any of, any crypto yet. Because that curriculum is relatively new, but this might give us an opportunity to be able to explore crypto.
And there's money in the funding to purchase curriculum tools and materials that we may need as well.
That's all, sorry. So I guess I would look at it as a parent, two ways, one, to have those kind of specialized classes which can be accessed by students who have the interest. But then another would be kind of a more broad reach across everybody to kind of, you know, like we always, we're like, oh, the credit for life fair that they do, well, that really isn't.
So that's the intent, the intent of the middle school component is to have it that's something that all middle school students go through at least once. And then the high school courses would be more of, I think, what you were thinking of.
Yeah, so would it be a separate class or would it be ingrained in one?
No, separate class, yeah.
But that every student would have?
At the middle school level, every student would have it.
Okay, thank you. Emily?
So is this, I'm woefully uninformed about some of this stuff, but I know that Hannah has mentioned a couple of times that other schools have a class that DECA.
Usually a series of them, yes.
And as opposed to having it be like a, an after-school, an extracurricular activity, is this, would this provide, as you're talking about a pathway, an opportunity for us to build that class or series of classes into that business department?
Potentially, you know, I think what Hannah was speaking of, marketing, management, a lot of accounting and so forth, a whole series of them. This is, could serve as some sort of foundation for some of that.
Probably not to the extent of that because career and technical education is what that more is geared towards. Marketing and business where a student chooses, hey, I want to be a marketing business pathway. Those typically end up, Massachusetts does end up in the vocational schools. So we're left with our CTR, Career Technical Student Organizations, like DECA. But if there was a way for us to, you know, if you look at DECA as a good example, where you could develop that skillset there in the class. And you could kind of hook kids into participating in a competition like DECA where they can use those skills and apply them in competitions. That would be, that'd be the whole.
It's just really hard to, like you need to like have so much initiative that, like if you're not doing, if you're not doing your project in class, like all the other kids are doing, you are doing it on your own time. And that's like something that a lot of kids like totally aren't up for. So it's kind of, I don't know, it's just hard to work all the pieces.
I'm sorry, I was a business major at one point. So I guess my other question would be, is can we leverage some of this, these opportunities through some of our college programs that we already have, the three college programs? Like I'm sure SNHU or Merrimack has like intro to business type of things that, you know, even giving students some of that experience, whether for college credit or not, I don't know.
Would, would kind of be nice, you know, to give our students those opportunities so that colleges see, oh, they've already taken some of these classes.
But also for the kids to see, oh yeah, I really don't like accounting, you know, something like that.
Yeah, I mean, I think there's, there's room for further exploration with this. And, you know, a lot of the classes you're talking about are classes that students take on campus here and get the credit for.
Right.
So we would need to have people here prepared to do that and enough enrollment to make it happen. So it's sort of a combination of things. And next year, if we move into a building, our enrollment will be as small as, as band. But setting a foundation for some possibility of the next classes coming ahead is, is there and I think there's an appetite for students who are interested in, in the field of business management, marketing. And then connecting the other components of accounting and so forth, through, you know, a business sort of cluster of classes that kids can take. And whether that's through VHS opportunities or through other opportunities, we're going to continue to explore them.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Okay, on to new business, first we have the award food service contract. Greg, is that you?
Sure, one. First of all, I would like to say thank you to Chris Redding, Dick Hodges and Chris Markins for being the, and Mary Ann Naffa. For helping out in reviewing these proposals, these are what they look like. They are not easy to go through. These things are big, voluminous and sometimes the information's hard to find. But they did it, it was scored and we went through it. The procedure is for us to enter into a one-year contract with a selected vendor with the option for two one-year renewals. We've been doing a lot of looking at things and like most things in the last couple of years because of COVID, nothing's really gone off as planned. But again, with the one-year contract, I'm expecting all our vendors and employees to get back to the norm. And if not, there will be consequences for not reaching that norm. The revol, results of the review were Charwell's, our current provider, had an average score of ninety-five. The other participant who submitted a proposal was Fresh Picks Cafe, they averaged an eighty-three point six. There's a two-part proposal to this under the state, one is the review of the proposal itself because this is strictly a money-based thing, but there is a price proposal component to it. I won't give you the actual numbers because they don't really matter in the whole scheme of things, but the Charwell's guaranteed profit was about double what Fresh Picks Cafe guaranteed profit was. So under the rules of the state, by frankly, they don't have much of a choice. I would like, oh, and also to go through this, sometimes this is the time of year we also talk about whether or not we're going to raise prices for meals next year. There is not going to be a free-for-all option next year, we're going, again, back to the norm. The prices will be as they were before. And my personal recommendation is we don't move them at all. The way the feds did it this year is going to be enough money in the fund to ensure that we don't need to raise prices for next year. So I guess what I'd like is someone to make a motion that we enter into the state recommended one-year contract with the potential for two one-year renewals with our current provider, Charwell's Food Service. So move.
Second.
Does anyone have any questions? Thank you all for taking the time to do that.
Yes, it's late time to, I'm assuming everybody's okay with leaving the prices the same, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
All in favor?
Thanks.
Yep. Okay, next is intra-district choice.
All right, thank you, Madam Chair. So each year around this time of the year in April for policy, JFBBA, I give you a list of, these are all the students that are in, projected to be in each grade next year. Elementary specifically. And our target ratio, so we look for, try to target eighteen kindergarten first and second and twenty-one in grades three through six. So on the chart I gave you, what we look for is, are there opportunities if someone wants to move from Page to go over to, go over to Sweetser? Is that, is, are there seats available? So this part is where you approve, there's this many seats that might be available. You depend on my insight in this to give you some guidance, so I'm going to do that for you. First, I would say last year, so this school year, we had, I think, the most requests that we have had. And that was about five, I think we had five or six requests that were new requests. So once someone transfers over, they, they are part of that school. They can return to their original school if they want to. But once they transfer over, they are there, they get to be there for the rest of the time and they occupy a seat. So when you, if you looked at these numbers, my recommendation to you, on the bottom, I put a very generic statement. But my recommendation would be, do not allow, we know that there's movement that's coming into the district. I will tell you as a great example, if you look at the kindergarten at Sweetser, during the budget season, Greg and I said, we, we felt like, and the numbers we had at the time, looked like we were not going to need a fourth kindergarten. At Sweetser, they're at sixty right now, that's twenty, that's six over what we need. So that might need an additional kindergarten, which might open up more space, but my recommendation at this time is, at Sweetser School, that there's no open spaces for intra-district transfer. At Donahue School, there's no open spaces for intra-district transfer. The most that they have are two extra in grades one, three and five to meet the targets. At Page, I would recommend that there's at most two open spots in second grade. Four open, three open spots in third grade, one open spot on fourth grade. And then at Bagnell, at sixth grade, you could have six open spots for sixth grade. But other than that, our, our schools, if you look at that chart, we are pretty tightly, like our class sizes are pretty much packed. So when you do have that question about, why don't we do school, school choice? Well, if we have school choice, we're immediately adding teachers, which immediately costs more money. And the five thousand dollars per student we get does not make up for that difference. So at this time, that would be my recommendation, I will put on there the caveat, I don't think this, I think, are the requests a separate issue?
No, the request is part of the issue.
So, so we do have three requests right now, and this is what I would say, there's three requests right now, all three are for kindergarten at Page. So right now, there's, the way I have it in the sheet for you is that there's two open spots. My recommendation would be, on kindergartens as a whole, that we don't make a decision. We wait until August at some point to make a decision to see what happens for enrollments, what comes in the summer. And then if we have to add a position, then we know there's open spots, if we don't have to add a position, we know there's not. And at the kindergarten with those two open spots, it might be that those three are still sitting there, in August, there's still only thirty-four students. Or maybe it drops a little bit and we can take all three. But I would not make a firm decision on kindergarten at this time. Grades one through six are pretty solid, like we know that there might be some fluctuation in and out, but not a tremendous amount.
So the only requests are for the Page kindergarten?
The only request, we have three requests for Page kindergarten.
Does anyone want to make a motion or we wait till August?
I don't think you need to wait for August first or sixth.
Wayne?
Make a motion that we go by his suggestion at this point. And wait a summer for those two, possibly three, see how things work out, so let's go with his recommendation.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Does anyone have any questions? Emily?
So my hesitation is around the second grade slots and just knowing what those students have experienced in their two years of elementary school so far and knowing both the academic as well as the executive functioning and sort of developmental deficits that are, that many schools are seeing. I don't have the numbers in front of me, but I'd love to know what the current numbers are that give us the idea of the two intra-district school choice at a second grade at Page would, like what the total would be, just again.
So second grade right now, for next year, there'll be 32 students and two teachers, so 16 in each class.
So these two would make it 17?
These two would make 17.
Definitely. I'm happy with that.
Yep. Any recommendation that I give you would not exceed what I would like to see?
No, for sure, but I, I mean, just to be honest, like, I spend all day in a classroom of 21 six-year-olds, seven-year-olds, and it's like trying to teach first grade to four-year-olds. And not because of any different, like, thing that the kids are doing wrong, it's just that's the delay of their school experience thus far. And I, I know that some of that will change as we've gone back to normal in some ways, but I also know that as we try to close these academic gaps as fast as possible, that there are a lot of other pieces that come into play that need to be addressed and that a class of 16 or 17 can feel a lot like a class of 30 kids when their development is not at the typical place. And, you know, I see my second grader coming home and talking about the wit and wisdom things that they're doing, and I find it miraculous that some of them are comprehending some of that stuff. So I just want to make sure that we're not setting these kids up for failure by adding in more, you know, more demand.
Does anyone else have anything they want to add?
I would just make one other comment. It is also, if you look at this chart, you can have it hard copy, it's, the link is always available, but if you do look at it, you'll see that those numbers, when the current eighth grade graduates, our numbers start to get bigger and bigger. Our previous numbers were bigger because we had school choice. And our school choice students, the last of our school choice students are in high school right now. So when high school leaves, our actual Groveland, Missouri, Merrimack population is going to get bigger and bigger, bigger than it's been. And we see that reflected in four kindergartens at Merrimack, four kindergarten at Sweetser, four kindergartens at Bagnell this year, and the next year, potentially another four at Merrimack with three. And so it's, it's good for the community, it's good for our, to have those good, strong foundation of students. But that growth is taking place.
Dick?
The figures that you've cited this evening are for April 12th. Come June, May, July, those figures could be right out the door. I mean, we could be at max, or we could even have more room for movement within the district. So.
If there's a provision, so absolutely for kindergarten, absolutely that is the case. People come in, there's phone call over at Merrimack today, put them at 60. So that absolutely will happen this summer for kindergarten. For the other grade levels, there's provisions that allow me, given a situation, to make an executive decision to move someone based on a unique.
Regardless of our vote this evening, okay, thanks.
But for those three, if those three spots are not opened up, and we only open up two, then we have to decide lottery system. These are the two that go in, and one person's out. But yes, we will just sit and wait, and we'll report back in August and let you know on kindergarten, these are what the numbers are and make a move from there.
Do these parents know that they're providing their own transportation to get their children?
Always, always.
Chris?
Oh, so I'm actually wondering whether, when, I remember when we put this policy into place, I think our numbers were much bigger across the district, and it was easier to earlier on ferret out openings. I'm wondering whether when we're reviewing these policies, if that's something we need to look at the date because we no longer have to make it April, we could make it July or August so that, you know. It seems like the past few years, we haven't had that information until August, really.
Yeah, so the last couple of years in particular with kindergarten has been so hard, just so hard to predict. The other grade levels are relatively easy, but kindergarten is just such a challenge. And we did put it off last year. And we ended up, we were able to make those moves.
We have, you know, there's an element of our kindergarten that actually plays a factor in this. We now have free full-day kindergarten. So no longer do we have a date of which people are required to apply by in order to be on the list to be considered for full-day kindergarten, even though they were paying tuition. Now people, they can wait to whenever, and they still will get kindergarten. So we've tried to do some push to get people to register, to let them know it's really critical and important, but at the end of the day, there's, we have to take them when they register.
Emily?
I wonder to Chris's point about, I mean, whether it goes in the policy or it's just something that we, but with the growth and change that we see happening in these, in our communities as we knew would when, you know, we put the shovel in the ground over there, if, if the houses for sale and those kinds of things keep changing, we might be better served to put off some of these decisions until a later date. As that, yes, these numbers are typically very stable in elementary grades, but when you're having, you know, a bunch of new builds, a bunch of houses that are up for sale, you know, a brand-new school building which draws a lot of, you know, attention and families with school-aged children, that that might play a factor, that'd be something to think about.
Yeah, I think certainly subcommittee on policy could take a look at that. I think if I were to, if you were to ask me, I would say if we put it down to June, great, we have more information. If you wait until August, which we are here, as a family, that might put me in a bind because I need to work out the logistics. But for these kindergarten folks, Mary Ann can reach out and say, hey, this is a decision right now, the numbers are too tight, we can't make a decision. So if you still want to be on the waitlist, then we can put you there in August, we'll have a more definitive answer, or we will have a definitive answer. But yeah, I think April is a little bit early, given the situation we're in in these towns moving and building.
When even thinking about the fact that kindergarten screening happens right after April vacation, that alone generates the conversation of, oh, right, I forgot to do that. Like, you know, I mean, that, that alone, I think, is.
Get more numbers.
Okay, so the motion on the floor is to approve the open spots that were recommended by Dr. B, which was one in fourth grade at Page, two in second grade at Page, three in third grade, none at the Sweetser, none at Donahue, and six spots in the sixth grade of Bagnell. All in favor?
And wait until August?
Oh, and wait until August, sorry, for the kindergarten, Page kindergarten spots. All in favor?
So I, so I thought we were putting everything off until August, so I evidently misunderstood my.
No, only the kindergarten?
Only kindergarten?
Yeah.
But I'm gonna.
It won't make a difference.
All in favor of going with Dr. B's recommendations? All opposed?
I'm going to abstain.
Abstain, okay. Next up is school choice seats for fiscal year '23.
Okay, this is where the school committee needs to vote whether or not we are going to allow students from the outside districts to be able to come into Penn Tucket. This has been a practice 10 years ago or 11 years ago that Penn Tucket took advantage of. Every student that comes in, the student, the school district receives $5,000. At that time, my understanding was that there was space, and they were trying to fill space, so we brought students in. Since that point, after that, after that one time, it was no longer approved. Students who were allowed in are grandfathered in. So if you had a kindergartner who came in that year, they are allowed to stay at Penn Tucket for the rest of their education career through 12th grade. So we've not approved since then, the primary reasons being, one, class, the size of, size of classes. Two, the space and buildings. And then three, $5,000, if you have 200 kids come in, $5,000 gets you $1 million. 200 kids coming in do not cost us $1 million. It costs us more than $1 million. It's not a, I was explaining this to a person, we, children are, have huge variables. Some children come in and they need, they're, it's easy, peace, no problem. Other children come in and they need one or two adults working with them in one of our programs, and that is expensive. You don't get this is, and I would never, would, if we participated. You don't go and hand-pick kids to come into our district. It's an open lottery, randomly picking, the students you get are the students you get. Right now, I just read to you the numbers. My recommendation would be, we do not have the space to have folks come in. And the cost-wise, we're already facing an override in Merrimack and Groveland. I don't see how this would be a benefit. It'd be initial plus, we even get the money, we get the money at the end of the year?
No, you get it next year.
At the start of the year or at the end?
Well, it comes monthly.
Okay. So, you know, if you're looking from a county, oh yeah, this is a good idea, except the amount of money we'd be spending out by the time we get to November, what Farx Ebo was coming in.
The worst part also is the size of the new middle high school. We're over staff capacity.
Oh, sure.
We shouldn't be bringing kids in now, that 10 years from now, we're going to make it worse.
Yeah, I, class space and school space are our two biggest. And the financial part is smart.
So do I have a motion to not have school choice seats open for fiscal year '23?
So moved.
Second. Any more discussion? All in favor? Thank you. And now our last item is the school choice participation.
So here we go, we've had intra-district choice, we've had school choice, and now we're having school choice participation. This is something we have to vote on each year, even though we're required to do it anyway. So this allows students who are in school, in our school district, to stay in our school district if they're from outside. And we participate because the state requires, and we do get reimbursed for those students. As well as, this also includes students of ours that go to other school districts, whether it's a parent working in a different school district or wherever it may be. And that is, it's Mass General Law, Chapter 76, Section 12B.
So do I have a motion to, to participate in school choice?
No, moved.
Massachusetts, yes.
Second.
Second. Any discussion? Does anyone have any questions?
I would just add on to this, that Greg and I, we looked into this last year, and we didn't have a choice, ended up we didn't have a choice.
We're kind of, when we got out that the kids leaving, we wouldn't have to pay for them, yeah, they won't let you do that. You can't stop them from leaving either.
Okay, so all in favor for participating, Penn Tucket participating in school choice? Any opposed? No? Okay. Okay. That is the end of our new business, and I just want to say, Joanna isn't here right now, but she has been on this committee for nine years, and it's her last days, and she's done a great job. So we just wanted to recognize her and say congratulations, and thank you for your service.
She'll probably walk in in a minute.
I know, she'll probably, oh, she's right there. And now I would like to go into executive session to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body in the chair, so declares, and we will not be returning to the regular meeting. Roll call vote, Chris?
Yes.
Oh, sorry.
So moved. Second.
Okay, roll call vote, Chris?
Yes.
Emily?
Yes.
Ashley?
Yes.
Wayne?
Yes.
Dick?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Okay. Great, thank you.